Item 6A, Accept Downtown San Bruno Parking Study Parking Management Plan.
Vice Mayor O’Connell.
Thank you. I have to recuse myself for this item since I own property within the 500 feet of that area.
Councilmember Medina.
I too am fortunate enough to live near our downtown and for that reason I’ll have to recuse myself per direction of City Attorney.
Okay. Vice Mayor and Councilmember, both be excused. Luckily we have three left, so go ahead and wait a moment and then, Darcy, your take is taken. So you can start when you’d like.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Darcy Smith and I’m the City’s Community and Economic Development Director and it’s my pleasure to present the Downtown San Bruno Parking Study and Parking Management Plan for you tonight. The agenda for my presentation tonight is for first to provide an overview of the plan and I’ll summarize the background and plan objectives. Next, the consultants who prepared the plan who are here tonight, Bill Hurrell, Vice President, and Anne Spivak, a Transportation Planner with CDM Smith, will provide a summary of the plan and delve into detail on the recommended parking management strategies. After their presentation, I’ll provide an update on the current status of the implementation strategies which was provided to you tonight as a desk item. And last, I’ll conclude with the staff recommendation. The staff recommendation is an action item for tonight to make a motion to accept the Downtown San Bruno Parking Management Plan. This plan was initiated back in 2016 through funding by CCAG. It’s important to emphasize that this is an implementation item for the City’s General Plan, the City’s Transit Corridor Plan, and also the San Bruno Measure and the Economic Enhancement Initiative. Also important to note of relevant background is that as part of the public outreach and community engagement for all those plans and the measure, the analysis of parking issues in the city’s downtown and transit corridor plan issue and the study and implementation of specific parking management strategies was a key issue identified by the community. Concern over this issue has been raised in recent years, but I just want to emphasize that the staff has been working diligently to try to obtain the funding for this plan, which was prepared by consultant. And it’s important to note it also was the scope of work was reviewed by the council back in June 2016. At that council meeting, the council did express a lot of support for the preparation of this plan. They said it was a very timely issue and that the council was eager to address those issues. Staff started working on that plan when the grant was awarded back in 2016 and the work continued in 2017, 2018 while the team prepared the study. And when I came onboard two months ago, it was one of the first major initiatives in a prior of the city manager to get this accepted and for you as quickly as possible. Key community engagement items was a community meeting that was held back in November 2017 at the American Legion Hall, so we got a great turnout. About 35 community members and staff attended that and they provide a lot of input to the items that you’ll see tonight. There were also key stakeholder interviews of the business community and key property owners in the downtown. Those were held in May 2018. Also in May, the existing conditions memorandum was provided to the council for you to review. The study area for the downtown parking plan includes San Bruno Avenue primarily, starts at Walnut Street in the north and goes to the south to El Camino Real and Taylor Avenue. But what this key takeaway from this slide is to emphasize that the study also looked at the surrounding residential areas about 1 to 3 blocks east and west of the downtown as shown here in the blue. The reason why that study area was expanded beyond the typical downtown parking was to determine if the downtown parking was affecting the neighborhoods, which was a concern raised by the community. And the consultants will speak to that in their presentation in more detail to give you the background on that and what they found. The plan has four main objectives and it’s a really robust plan. So the first more comprehensive part of the plan is the analysis. There was a comprehensive study of the parking supply and occupancy on the street, both in the public and private parking lots. That was completed in May 2017 and it included one weekday and one weekend. And parking duration and turnover was also studied because that’s kind of an important indicator of who’s using the parking and for how long. And last, the current parking regulations and enforcement were studied. Second, the plan looked at projecting future demand through 2050, which is a long horizon, but they looked at the transit corridor plan growth projections and analyzed those relative to bigger things like a parking garage downtown. The key part of the presentation tonight that I really want you to learn a lot from are these recommended phased parking management strategies for the downtown. Those are really the keystones of this plan to effectively manage the peak demand periods and also look at options to increase the parking supply. So, third, it’s just important to emphasize that those strategies have been really analyzed and that in some cases there are options that were identified that will require further study. Last, can’t do a plan without looking at costs. So in addition to looking at the cost and revenues for some of the bigger, more expensive items like a parking garage, it looks at smaller items that the city is hoping to implement on a shorter timeframe like meters. So I will now turn the presentation over to the city’s parking consultants from CDM Smith. We have Bill Hurrell, who’s the Vice President, and Anne Spivak, who’s the Transportation Planner.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Anne Spivak, Transportation Planner with CDM Smith. And I’m going to go over the existing conditions, which was a review of the supply of parking and the usage of parking in downtown as well as the projection of future demand. So this map is showing the existing parking supply. We’re showing the lots, the parking lots in blue are public lots and the parking lots in orange are private facilities. Darker blue indicates a 2-hour parking lot and light blue indicates 5-hour parking. The street parking is shown as the colored outlines on the blocks. The blocks outlined in blue and dark blue are also 2-hour parking. Yellow blocks are unregulated and pink blocks indicate no parking. And just to clarify, the blocks that do not have a color outline, they do have parking there just as Darcy noted outside of the parking study area and were not included in the occupancy study. So this is a summary of the total parking supply within the study area, which is 1,564 spaces. All of this parking in downtown San Bruno with the exception of the Caltrain lot is free, though a large proportion of the parking spaces have a time limit intended to serve commercial uses. A third of the spaces within the study area do not have a time restriction. So we also collected occupancy data, which we’re showing here as a percentage of the total number of spaces on the block or in the lot that were occupied by a vehicle at a particular time of day. And we collected this data for one weekday and one Saturday in May of 2017. This slide shows the weekday, midday, and evening occupancy collected on Thursday, May 18th. Portions of San Mateo Avenue and adjacent streets are used heavily during the midday, but many blocks and off-street facilities have available spaces. In the evening, residential parking is very full with some blocks exceeding estimated capacity due to vehicles squeezing into small spaces or parking in front of driveways. The public lots experience moderate to low usage throughout the day with only one public lot exceeding 85% at the midday peak, but some vehicles stay parked in these lots late into the night. This slide shows the midday and evening parking occupancy for Saturday, May 13th, 2017. Parking usage was found to be heavier on Saturday than was observed on the weekday, both for on-street and off-street during the midday and in the evening. Residential areas are quite full with residents staying home for the weekend and the central commercial areas as well, including the public lots, are full with visitors, many of which may not visit the area during the week. This slide shows the length of stay for vehicles in the 2-hour spaces on San Mateo Avenue, which was collected both the weekday and the weekend. On the weekday, we found 13% of vehicles are exceeding the 2-hour time limit and on the weekend, 17% of vehicles are exceeding the 2-hour time limit. So some of the main points to take away from the existing conditions analysis, the occupancy of spaces that primarily serve businesses is moderate to high during the daytime and decreases after 8:00 PM on the weekdays and weekends, but vehicles, some vehicles do remain overnight. The residential street blocks are well-used during the weekday but are full or exceed capacity in the evenings and on the weekends. And there is some evidence that residential parkers may be using the commercial parking areas in the evenings when there’s no room left on residential blocks. So in addition to the existing conditions analysis, we developed a parking demand model to project future parking demand. The model relies on the fact that parking demand for each use within downtown will vary throughout the day. And because different uses peak at different times, the total peak parking demand for downtown will be less than the sum of the peak demand for each individual use. So to develop this model, we first estimated parking demand rates for each type of use, it’s retail, restaurant, residential, office, et cetera, based on the observed occupancy as well as best practices, industry standards. And these rates varied by time of day and day of the week calibrated to the actual observed demand. And these resulting rates, we then applied to the future growth scenarios for 2030, 2040, and 2050, which were based on development in the pipeline and the development assumed by the Transit Corridors Plan. In addition, we assumed maximum occupancy rates within the facilities of 85% for public parking, 95% for the private parking facilities, just to ensure that there was additional capacity for people to find parking without having to circle the block searching for parking. So the resulting demand from this analysis for 2030, we expected up to 76 additional spaces would be needed. In 2040, an additional 109 spaces for a total of 185 spaces would be needed. And by 2050, an additional 248 spaces for a total of 433 spaces across the whole study And now I will pass the presentation on to my colleague, Bill Hurrell.
Thank you, Anne. I’m Bill Hurrell with CDM Smith. So I wanted to talk to you a little bit about the strategies that we developed as part of this process. These are based upon the information that Anne just went through with you, but also the input we received from the public and from the stakeholders during the process and from our own observations of what’s happening here in the city and what has worked well in other cities, particularly other cities on the peninsula itself. So the first thing is adjusting the enforcement hours. As Anne mentioned, the peak time is really late in the day, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And right now, enforcement stops at 6:00 PM. So there is a real need to extend the enforcement hours later into the evening, particularly on Fridays and on weekend evenings, so that there is some enforcement, some management of the parking during that peak time. Now, in order to avoid significant expense, one approach would be to actually shift in the morning the enforcement back so it would start at 10:00 AM. So the enforcement staff would still work the same number of hours, just starting later in the day. The second strategy is adjusting the time restrictions. Right now, that’s the main tool that you use to manage parking and with enforcement, time restrictions can work quite well. But one of the things we observed is that today, where you have either 2-hour restrictions or 5-hours, is that the 5-hour time limits, they’re really not long enough for employees to park and they’re longer than most visitors really need. So what we’re proposing is basically expanding some of the 2-hour spaces and then converting the 5-hour spaces to 10-hours so that employees can park there. It’s important for employees to have a place to park. I think one of the big concerns of the residents is overspill into their area and if there isn’t a space for them to park in, that encourages that type of activity. So by having the 10-hour spaces and also having the enforcement occurring later into the evening, that will prevent that. This one is kind of a no-brainer, but it’s very important. The existing parking lots during the daytime are, still have capacity available and in the evening while they’re full, people do have some difficulty understanding which parking is actually the public parking that’s available to them and which is private parking. So better signage indicating that and also some improved maintenance and security, meaning perhaps lighting, more presence of security personnel, that type of thing would help with making those lots more attractive to people and better utilized. The next strategy relates to short-term increases in parking and drop-off capacity. There is a, you know, there is a need even right now to try to find some additional parking opportunities. So one option would be using the former Caltrain station as a temporary employee parking lot. Another option would possibly be restriping a portion of San Mateo Avenue to increase the number of parking spaces. Then in terms of how to reduce congestion, there is, as you’re probably aware, in the afternoon, there tends to be a lot of drop-off activity. People dropping off and picking up people that go to various commercial uses in the downtown and there’s double parking that occurs with that. So one way to address that would be to actually take some spaces and during the period from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM, actually convert them into temporary loading zones so that people would actually have a place to do that drop-off activity. And then, once that is done, then it would be appropriate to also up the enforcement so to encourage people to use those loading zones and just to prevent that double parking activity or at least reduce it because it’s quite substantial right now. Another strategy that we looked at is price parking. A lot of the cities in the peninsula currently charge for parking in their downtown areas. Pricing, a lot of people think it’s just to raise revenue, but the real purpose is to manage the demand and it’s a very effective tool. For example, if you go back to what we’re suggesting, 2-hour and 10-hour parking, encouraging employees only to park in those 10-hour spaces, even in doing that, there are going to be employees that are going to park in the 2-hour spaces and because it’s free, they can go out and move their cars a couple times a day and get away with parking in those areas. But if it’s paid parking, then all of a sudden it becomes a little bit painful for them to pay that higher rate to park in the short-term parking. So that’s one way pricing could be used to better manage the parking. Pricing also allows for better enforcement and it does generate some revenue that can be used to cover operating costs and sometimes capital improvements. The best types of pricing policies are those that can be varied by location and type of parking. As I mentioned, you would have higher parking rates for the 2-hour parking than you would for the 10-hour parking. You would also, you could also vary it by location. If there’s 10-hour parking that’s not well-utilized, then you would lower the price there to encourage people to use it. If there’s parking that’s heavily utilized, you would raise the price to encourage people to park in the less-used areas. So it’s a very powerful tool. It’s also very effective when the city staff has the power to change the price based on the observed parking demand. A lot of cities set the parking rates and then basically they stay set at that level for a long time until the council votes to make a change. And that doesn’t really allow this kind of proactive management of the parking that’s very important. There’s a lot of technologies now for paid parking. Parking meters are smart now. They take credit cards, they have sensors that can observe if the vehicle’s in space or not, they can alert enforcement personnel that some of the cars in the space and hasn’t, the person hasn’t paid. They can also be supplemented with mobile parking payment, which would be payment using a cellphone or smartphone or using a laptop computer where you could go online and pay your parking. You would actually get an alert if your parking meter was running out of time and you could extend it, for example. These are very popular with people. There are multi-space meters, which some people call kiosks, where you walk to the kiosk and then either enter your parking space number and the money or enter your license plate number or take a receipt back to your car. There are a number of different ways of doing it. So there are a lot of different options for parking pricing. Then residential permit parking programs. One of the things we heard quite extensively and it’s pretty obvious in looking around the downtown area, that there’s a shortage of parking in the residential areas right now, particularly in the evenings. And a residential permit parking program that was properly designed could help manage that situation, could prevent non-residents from parking in those areas. And it could also, depending if you control the number of permits issued, it could manage the number of cars that could be parking in the area overall. There is also kind of a reduced or reversed possibility and that would actually be to issue permits for residents to park in the downtown parking facilities overnight. That would have to be controlled. We wouldn’t want, you wouldn’t want residents leaving their cars there so they’re there during the business day. But there is an asset there that’s not really being used right now during the late night and evening, so that there is a possibility of using that in a controlled way to manage the parking. The other thing we looked at is a parking structure or structures as a strategy to increase the parking supply. As Anne showed you with the demand numbers, there is going to be a need in the future for some additional parking in the area. And parking structure is an effective way of doing that. Some people say parking structures increase traffic, but they actually help manage traffic in terms of eliminating cruising, providing people with a destination that they understand where they can go and park and it encourages people to walk around the downtown area, which is a very positive thing and good for the economy. Ground floor retail, retail in the structure can make it much more attractive to people so it’s not a dead space as they walk down the street and also it helps with security. A lot of cities have incorporated private development or actually partnered with private development projects to add public parking in small, sometimes in small increments, maybe just 25 spaces, 50 spaces or whatever, that the city pays the developer or enters in an agreement with the developer to create that parking. So that’s one way of doing it. And of course, specific site analysis has to consider the appropriateness of each site and how well it would work in terms of the adjacent land uses and availability of land in the downtown. As far as a parking structure’s cost, the costs now, they vary quite a bit, but roughly an average of about $40,000 per space. So a 450-space parking structure would cost about $18 million. So there is a significant cost involved. Parking fees that you could charge, either fees for the structure itself or fees, let’s say, for parking meters, could cover some of the costs, but frankly, they’re probably mostly just going to cover operating costs and some smaller portion of the overall cost of building the parking structure. Another way of funding it would be through a parking district or business improvement district. This is where the property owners would agree essentially to assess themselves to help pay for the parking. Related to that is the idea of in-lu fees. This is where a developer comes in, let’s say, to renovate a property where your code would normally say, “Okay, if you renovate the property, you need to provide a certain number of spaces.” That in-lu fee is an option that the developer has. Instead of providing the spaces, they pay the city the fee and that would cover, essentially offset that cost. And then finally, private-public partnerships are another key element. So that is the summary and I’m going to turn it back over to Darcy.
Okay, Darcy.
Thank you, Bill. So I’ll just cover quickly the status of those recommended strategies you just heard about. There’s a lot of information on this slide, so we prepared a one-page handout that summarizes it, which I think is effective. And one of the key takeaways from this slide is that of the seven short-term strategies, four are already underway by staff. Two of them will be added to staff’s work plan for 2019 and the Caltrain lot will, the lease will be pursued when the electrification staging is completed. This slide presents the status of the recommended mid- and long-term, but we’ve moved one up, which is the residential permit parking program expansion. Staff is preparing a pilot program, which will be presented in more detail tomorrow night at the Town Hall for community input. And we anticipate issuing an RFP for parking meters later this year. And finally, we’ll be analyzing the formalization of overnight resident parking later this year. The parking garage is probably the biggest long-term item and I think we will look at that in conjunction with the installation of meters and future development activity. In conclusion, the staff recommendation tonight is to take action and make a motion to accept this plan. And I just want to emphasize that this action doesn’t commit the city to any future funding or implementation. It’s merely accepting this plan and identifying those key strategies that staff will work on and any future funding or project implementation would come back before the council as necessary. So that concludes my presentation. Myself or the consultants are happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Any questions of staff, consultant, or Michael?
No, no questions.
No, I don’t have any questions. I think it’s an excellent presentation. I’m excited to see these changes. I’m happy to see that some things are already underway and that we’re looking to make those changes in 2019. I think that we know that we’ve been waiting for something like this and it’s interesting to see the demand really during the weekdays isn’t as great as we thought really it is. Everybody knows at night, it’s, you know, we’re, I mean, I’m surprised to see over 1,000 parking places because I don’t really know where those are at because they’re not available when I’m driving down on San Mateo Avenue. But we always seem to find them after a little bit of effort, so I’m really excited. I think it’s great, great work and thank you for the presentation.
Were there any speaker cards, Melissa?
No.
Okay. I know there was, it was about also giving opportunity and not having to come to council. That was alluded to, that having it more real-time, having the availability by staff to make changes, to be more reflective upon the way the parking element is going as far as cost and/or timing. I know you went, talked about extending the hours and the parking enforcement. Has that at all been gone by with police at this point or as far as costs? I know, I thought it was a great outside-the-box, move the shift to 10:00 AM so that you have the same amount of hours and just changing the enforcement time. So I just wondered if there’s been a collaboration on that.
There has. So we have talked about the recommendations and should council accept the plan tonight, we can, we will put in a place to shift schedules around. It will be something that we will analyze because as we shift from one part of the day to the latter part of the day, that may have an impact on revenue generation, but we will be mindful of that. But we will and we are prepared to adjust the schedule of some of our parking enforcement officers to be later in the day.
And do we have an idea of what kind of timeframe that might be, meaning of, we’ll And do we have an idea of what kind of timeframe that might be, meaning of, well, it starts and six months later it's evaluated, or a year comes back? As far as updates and information back to council on how it is progressing?
We can certainly provide an update when we have our budget conversations. I think that'll be really timely. As far as initial implementation, we will begin after tonight, should council accept it. Full rollout may take sixty to ninety days as people adjust their schedules, and we want to give staff a fair warning, because that does have a significant impact. But we have the ability to adjust staffing without adding additional personnel, and we would look to do it through the regular scheduling process.
And then finally, how would we notify merchants or make notification of those changes, so it's not just a shock, or, you know, they didn't know, or?
Certainly. We'll have a full information campaign to get that information out to the merchants on San Mateo Avenue and through all the various social media avenues that we have as well.
Okay, thank you. Anything?
To the chair?
Two, please.
Yeah, sure. So I was at the November 2017 community meeting prior to being seated on the council, so I heard a lot of the comments firsthand at that meeting. While parking might seem trivial to some people, it is very important when it impacts your quality of life. So although it took a while to get to this point, I am glad to see this. Some of the recommendations were being floated around even back then, a little over a year ago. But having the data to back this up, I think, is really important. So seeing that all of this is not just somebody's perception, but that there is really a concern, and that we are hitting limits, and having some quantitative information around what the solutions are going to cost us and what the potential impact of those things is going to be, I think is going to be very useful to us. So I am glad to see the results of this report, and I think it will help us move forward.
Okay. Do we want a motion, or do we want just consensus?
Motion to accept the plan.
Okay. Is there action by council?
I will make a motion to approve the plan.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second to accept the downtown San Bruno parking study parking management plan. I'll listen, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll do roll call of council member Davis.
Aye.
Council member Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Motion carries with Vice Mayor O'Connell and Councilmember Medina abstaining.
Yes, thank you.
Reused.
Sorry, refused.
Marty and Irene.